I'd like to call the call to order, the meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Vernon Hills for November 12th, 2020. Going to take an attendance roll call here. Baumann?
Here.
Cashin?
Here.
Kennedy? Newberg? Vandermeulen. Okay. First order of business is, we need to approve the zoning board of appeals minutes for the meeting held on June 25th, 2019.
I approve, we approve those minutes as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call on the motion to approve the minutes? Baumann?
Aye.
Cashin?
Aye.
Kennedy? Newberg?
Yes.
Vandermeulen is aye. All right. We have one case this evening. It's case number 2020-001. It's a petition filed by Eugene Childers, I think with the signage company, representing Rustoleum Corporation. They're requesting a variation from the village code ordinances, chapter 19, signs, section 19, 3, C, 6, small c, to allow a ground mounted sign to be 59.16 square feet in lieu of the maximum code allowance size of 50 square feet. In addition, it's also a variation from section 19-58 to allow an automatic changing sign for office use, which currently isn't allowed in the code. Okay? I take it we have the presenters for the petitioner here tonight? Okay, if you want to step up to the podium there?
Thank you.
Please identify yourself to.
Eugene Childers, 302 Alice Court, Vernon Hills, Illinois, and I am the corporate facilities manager for Rustoleum.
Oh, okay.
Hey, did you receive these in your packets?
Yes, we got the signage and the plat of survey.
Okay. What we're planning or would like to do is to add the digital sign on top of our existing sign.
Gene?
Yes?
Can I go through a formality here?
Oh, sure.
I need you to raise your right hand.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Do you swear under oath that the information and data you're presenting to the zoning board of appeals this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, great. Thank you, Eugene. Go ahead and you can start your presentation.
Okay. What we wanted to do is to modify our existing brick structure sign, which is directional currently today, to incorporate a digital sign above it so we could disseminate information out to the community as well as to our employees on things relating to corporate safety information that would be beneficial to the community as well. Structure, uh... One foot five inches over the existing height of our sign. And it will tie in with electrical and everything that's already in existence.
Okay.
Any questions I can answer for you?
Yeah, Gene, there's a couple of formalities again. The zoning board of appeals is a recommendation body to the village trustees. Our task, in order to make our recommendations, there are three criteria we need you to represent to us. I know it's in your write-up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's in your petition. If you could kind of just summarize those real quickly for us, then we'll open the floor to any questions any of the board members may have.
Let me just grab those.
Gene, if you need them, I've got them right here.
Yeah, if I could?
No problem.
Thank you.
Then just let me have that back when you're done.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
The digital sign on statement number one is to provide information to our associates and the community at large. Some examples such as these are weather advisories, closings of our facilities, customer service appreciation events, and information of general interest to the communities. Number two, the plight of the owners, unique circumstances are as follows. We're looking to enhance the our ability to communicate with both our associates and the community at large, just by making it more visible and... And I think a quite attractive sign available for the community. Number three, if the variance is granted, we will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood because the digital sign is attached to our existing monument sign. Will not affect the overall aesthetics of the current structure and its situated, so only traffic going on Hawthorne Parkway will see it, saw it, won't interfere with anything going towards our neighborhood.
Around 60 there?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Right. Thank you for giving us your responses to the three criteria that we have to address.
Thank you.
Before we get into open questioning, can I ask a couple of clarifying questions? Okay?
Sure.
My read of the request is you're altering just one sign, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. On the plat of survey, there are two signs, Rustoleum sign locations identified. One is in the northwest corner of the property.
Yes.
The other is in the northeast corner. I wasn't clear, which sign is it that you're actually looking to modify? Is it the one in the northwest corner?
It's the northwest corner, which is by the employee entrance.
Got it. All righty. Being an employee or a representative of Rustoleum Corporation, do you see in the near future, if you're going to request a similar sign modification to the other sign that's in the northeast corner of the property?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Gene, a couple of quick questions for you regarding your knowledge of the capabilities of the sign and the intended use of how it's actually operated. Okay?
Sure.
First question. I'm assuming that the print that can be displayed on this sign can be multi-colored?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, it would cover all your basic primary colors?
Yes.
Blue?
Nothing more.
Red? Yellow?
All the primary colors.
Primary and probably secondary. I'm sure you can do orange and green and purple and the like, okay? So, it is definitely a multicolor signage capability?
Yes.
Okay. Does the sign have the capability to scroll lettering?
Yes.
Okay. Does it have the capability to flash whatever you're presenting?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And then the last question is, I'm assuming that you have multiple letter sizing that you can put on the sign and the same as the script design of the letters?
Yes.
So, it's variable. It can range two inches to...
Correct.
What's the tallest part of the sign?
And our...
Twelve inches?
Our corporate communications department is going to be controlling this, so no one else will have access to it.
Okay. Okay. So, do you know if Rustoleum Corporation has a policy set for how to utilize this sign?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to ask you to forward to the village of Vernon Hills a copy of that policy regarding the use of that electronic sign?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that would be greatly appreciated, and I'll tell you why. My understanding is that underneath the sign code right now, there are no hard written guidelines for how digital signage can be used. Whether or not there's restrictions on the types of colors that can be used, whether it's a flashing sign, whether it's a scrolling sign, size of the letters that may be put on there, while it's not that great of a concern with what Rustoleum is asking, there may be cases in the future where you have a much larger sign that the actual digital sign itself fulfills 50 square feet. And that can give you a lot of latitude as to how much information you're putting on there, the size of the type, which does have certain restrictions in the sign code. Those restrictions were clearly identified for permanent stationary signs as opposed to a digital sign. So, what I can say is I think we are treading a little new territory in terms of applications on commercial office space.
Sure. I'll meet with our corporate communications folks and see what we can put together for you.
Okay. That would be excellent and greatly appreciated by the village.
Sure.
Those are the basic factual questions I had to ask. Does anybody have any other fact questions? Or would you like to address any of the three criteria that Gene has presented to us?
I'd like to ask a question regarding the sign, and that is, is it one-sided or two-sided?
It's two-sided.
Two-sided. And I'd imagine you've got control over the illumination because you're directly across the street from a retirement home. And I've seen some changing signs that are just incredibly bright and to the point of annoyance. And I know that that would not be your goal, but I'm hoping it's saying that if it did come off a little hot, you could cool it down.
Oh, yes, I believe we could.
And I think those are the only questions I had about the sign.
Have we received any objections from any of the neighbors or anything like that?
Yeah, there was nothing in the package.
I was going to ask Mike, but I guess he's up there.
Yeah. Mike, do you know of any objections that have been filed against this petition?
I've received no objections.
Okay.
Oh, Mike, the second question is, I'm only aware of one other digital sign lock for like this, a CDW, I think, has one, but I don't recall anybody else within the village.
Uh, BC Baxter Credit Union. Okay. Have one as well.
Okay, I never... Yeah, that's over now, okay.
Well, I have some questions about these three questions or statements here. I don't really believe you've really addressed, not addressed, but satisfied any of those. I don't see that there's a, that you cannot yield a reasonable use in return if the variance is not granted. I think that I don't see this as that being the situation addressing that question. I just don't see that that is a need, that there'd be serious downside if you didn't do it. Unique circumstances, looking to enhance our ability to communicate. I don't know if I call that a plight or not, that may be a stretch, but I mean, that's... These, like the chairman said, that, you know, we're an advisory board, so we kind of like look at it, you know, maybe not as strict as some other boards do. Essential character of the neighborhood, I think it does affect that because it's a flashing light. It doesn't affect a larger size. I don't really have a problem with that. It's not that much larger, you know? But the flashing, especially in that curve that goes on Hawthorne Parkway, I know that with this sign out here in the front of the village hall, it's very frustrating because you don't really get to read things, you know? I mean, if you... I'm back and forth a lot, so I can kind of get the gist of the messages that we're putting on. And there's a stoplight there. And this, it's kind of a dangerous curve. I don't know if there's been any accidents, but when you drive it, you're having... It's kind of a narrow lane, two lane there. You're trying to stay in your lane. You're trying to make sure the other guy stays in his lane. And now you've got a flashing sign that you're going to be wanting people to read. I just don't see the need for it. And it's not my decision to whether it's needed or not, but I don't see that it's that much a benefit to the community. I think it's something that mainly will be communicating your business information, you know, the recognition for employees and birthdays and that. And that's fine. But I think in that situation, in that spot there with so much going on there, I just don't see that it's, any kind of benefit outweighs the inherent risk of having that. That's my opinion anyway.
Okay.
You've been there a long time. Now, why all of a sudden do you feel a need for this sign?
We've had a change in upper management, and our new president fell very strongly about having something like this to get some of this information out into the community. So, this was requested by him.
Okay. I want to bring up some additional information and get some more factual information to discuss these three points. Gene, are you familiar how far that sign that you do want to get the variance on? How far that is from the road?
It's probably about 20, around 20 feet.
Okay.
So, it's not right on top, so it shouldn't be a real major distraction for motorists.
Well, that's, I think, what we're leading to. I mean, Mr. Cashin has raised a valid point.
Sure.
If you're presenting colors on a digital sign that are like to, you know, traffic signals, warning lights, such as orange on, you know, work area spots, okay? You want to make sure that you're not creating a driving impediment.
Sure.
That could lead to problems, okay? And I don't need to elaborate on problems, okay? We raised the question about the flashing of the sign, okay? I mean, it's a medical fact that flashing signs can induce, okay, a seizure in certain people, okay? The last thing you want is, number one, either a driver taking place with, but if they are prone to seizures, there's usually driving restrictions with that person. But if you've got a passenger in the car that lapses into a seizure, that is definitely going to distract the driver from what he's doing. So, I mean, that's why we're addressing these questions. And like I said, we are kind of dealing in new territory. But we want to try and address if, while Mr. Cashin has a valid concern, how likely is it to occur? An interference with a driver's interpretation of a traffic signal with an informational sign, okay? 20 feet off of the roadway is a pretty good distance. You know, if it were 10 or less, you would ask more questions. Yeah. I mean, that's definitely going to be in a driver's line of sight when he's viewing the roadway, okay? But we do need to address those issues if they're raised by the board members.
Sure.
Okay? So...
Yeah, I mean, we can always take the things and make it where that doesn't have that functionality available, and it's just a scrolling sign.
Yeah. We are asking these questions and bringing the three circumstances, the three items that we have to identify because this is probably going to be a much larger issue for the village going forward. Okay? We've seen it with other types of technical changes going on with the properties and how the codes were written at the time they were written and how technology has changed. While these digital signs are very common in commercial retail space, okay, those technological advantages, the signage, are probably going to trickle down and become more commonplace with commercial office space, okay? So, we're trying to lay out in our recommendations to the board of trustees potential issues coming down the line, okay? And I think the board has seen that these are going to be some of the issues this board's addressed in the past with. Maybe we need to get more formal on the village's part to give a better outline of what the village expects and what, you know, occupants of the city, people business-wise and residential-wise, can expect to see coming out of the village in terms of what they allow and what their expectations are for any occupant of the city. So, that's why the nature of the questions, okay? Are there any other points, discussions on that?
I had one other, and Larry mentioned it was on the curve. I mentioned it was right by the senior housing. Was any consideration given to possibly adding the illuminated informational addition to the sign to the one in front of your visitor lot instead? Because then you wouldn't be near the curve and you would be, have no neighbor across the street but yourself.
I think we could be agreeable to that.
Larry, do you think that might address a little of the curve? Because it's, driving's a lot different there. By the curve, you've got to start worrying about the guy next to you because he's going to figure out that he's in a turn-only lane and he wants to get over into the left.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be better from that standpoint. I guess we've got a couple in the village that do this, like the credit union on Milwaukee Avenue. I think Public Works has one too, don't they, on Butterfield?
They do now.
There are lights there on Milwaukee Avenue. There's traffic that stop and go. You get a chance CDW too. You know, there's traffic lights there that people stop to get to see these things. On this, you're just flying right by. I just don't see what the... I don't see that there's a benefit to the village, one more sign to say you should wear a mask or something like that. I don't know that there's a real benefit. I think in that other location, it does certainly take the issue of the tighter, more intense traffic flow there.
Yeah, I mean, we're agreeable to that.
Yeah.
Do you plan on having like the signage, the scrolling and stuff like 24 hours a day or a certain time? Like, I think the biggest problem is during the day, you won't... It's not that distracting, but at night, if you're coming around the curve at night...
I think our primary thing is to do it during the day. I don't even think we run it at night.
Okay. I think that's the problem, I think, with Mr. Cashin's concern was when you're coming around at night, when it's real distracting. During the day, it wouldn't be as distracting as...
I mean, if you come up with a set of requirements, I'm sure we'll be agreeable.
Okay. Any further discussion on that point, gentlemen? I mean, Mike, I need to ask you a question.
Okay.
Can we modify, in agreement tonight, any proposed changes or modifications to the variance request, such as...
Sure.
Allowing them to have this sign modification made on the sign that's in the northeast corner of their property as opposed to the northwest corner? And pass this?
Yes, you can place whatever condition you want into your motion. So, it could be a motion to approve, conditioned upon the display panel be relocated to the east sign, also conditioned upon the sign not being used, you know, at night. And then any other, any other condition you think is appropriate, that would be fine. And then that would be part of your recommendation to the board.
Okay. Okay. Let us have a board discussion here real quick and with Gene and see if we can't come to an accommodation to go ahead and get this thing passed through. Okay? John, you brought up the issue of about hours, or actually Larry, you did. What if we were to modify the variance request to moving it to the northeast sign on the property and that the sign could not be illuminated after, let's say, 10:00 p.m.?
After dark, I would say. I would say during daylight hours.
That kind of takes away some of the desire and necessity of having illuminated light, though. Tom, that's the only thing that concerns me.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
There are going to be...
What they're trying to do is recognize the employees during while they're there, so at 10 o'clock at night, they're not there.
Well, informational too, to the employees. And we can take what's happening right outside that window right now.
Yeah.
It's dark at 4:30. People typically don't leave work until somewhere between 5:00. Let's be honest. In today's world, people are working until 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, okay? I don't know how you'd get around that without balancing out. You want the benefit there, which is intended for the employees, and if it's community information also, okay? Such as if it's COVID-19, the governor's declared a stay-at-home policy. You want to make sure that's visible when you have the benefit of people being able to pick up public messages or the like. That's why I threw out 10 o'clock.
Well, that brings up another question as far as whose controls, as far as what public messaging is going to be on there? Is that up to Rustoleum to decide what goes on the sign? Or is the village going to have some oversight as far as like things like some public messaging?
Okay. Public messaging is just that, it's public messaging. If it has been announced out in the public by an authoritative source, that is available for transmission in the public because the authoritative or originating source has deemed it to be in the public marketplace. So, I mean, if they're publishing information that is not public knowledge, not intended for the public, that's a different matter, okay? And I think that is a matter that, you know, the owner of the sign would have to deal with, okay? I mean, there are recourse options if they're publishing non-public information. If they're publishing public, publicly released information, okay? How can you hold them accountable? It's in the public domain. Okay? Tom, you have to be careful too. And if you want somebody's approval, like in the village, okay? You do not want to set up a scenario where you have public information out in the world, and if somebody's trying to restrict the conveyance of what has been made public, okay? I don't think that's appropriate either, restricting information that is put out in the public domain.
Well, that's the question I have is now that the signs that we have right now are CDW and Baxter that I'm, I was, I'm only aware of now. Is all the information that they publish is all about the company, the employees? Or is there actually something other than...
Yeah, I can't say, I can't say for sure.
Who has what control over what public information is put out there?
Yeah. Mike, are you, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. Quick question. Are there any restrictions in the village codes as to what can be illuminated on these digital signs?
Well, no, I mean, there's first amendment rights that apply to what they can put on that sign. So, they can display, you know, any number of messages related to their business or community information at large.
Yeah.
But there's no real particular restrictions on what they can and cannot put on that, on that sign.
Okay. Okay. So, I mean, if we don't have any prohibitions in the code right now, Tom, okay? It would be very difficult for anybody to have a hindrance put on them for publishing what has been publicly announced and put it out into the public market, okay? If they were doing otherwise, you wouldn't necessarily need the village to inhibit that, okay? You would basically have other parties that may step in and, you know, create issues with what's being published on that sign. That's basically my point that I'm trying to make, okay? We're walking a very new and very broad subject area here, okay? And to talk about the type of language that's put on there in the course of this board meeting, I'm not sure that we can adequately address that, okay? I think the time, okay, and the points that the other board members brought up are appropriate to address, okay? If we set some time limits on one, that illuminated sign can be displayed is one thing, okay? If we get into the language that is put on the sign, that's a much bigger world that we have to deal with. And I'm not sure it's appropriate for the zoning board of appeals to be addressing that right now. Because we're not dealing with, okay, a variance on an existing code. We're dealing with something that doesn't have a lot of code written about it yet, okay? with something that doesn't have a lot of code written about it yet, okay? But, Gene, the indication I'm getting from you from the nods is that you would be agreeable with having that digital sign put on the current existing sign that's in the northeast corner of the property.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are those signs similar?
They're identical.
Yeah.
The only thing different is some of the information that's on them, because one says visitor parking, the other says employee, and that type of stuff.
Okay. Are you agreeable with having some type of time restrictions on there?
Yes, I don't see any problem with that.
Assuming that we can agree on a reasonable time arrangement, okay, given the intent of the sign, employee communication, it's also communicating to customers that may come in, okay, to your facility, it may be information that is germane to public that are driving by the sign and may be able to read it, okay? So, gentlemen of the board, you want to give that a little thought, okay? We have an agreement that will modify the variance request to the sign that's in the northeast corner of their property, and let's see if we can't come up with a reasonable timeframe that they're allowed to illuminate that sign.
Question, moving that from the northwest to the northeast, now, how does that change anything?
The concern that Larry brought up was that it's on a curve, okay?
Okay.
And the driver is at a point right there where he needs the least amount of distraction, because you've got two lanes merging, okay? You're coming around this corner, now, and does the driver have to worry about, am I doing a turning arc that keeps me in my lane of operation, or am I moving over into another lane? Plus, they have to be cognizant of the fact that they're coming up to an intersection where there is a turn-only lane, okay? And that alone can dictate people changing lanes relatively quickly, okay? Because when they come up, they don't realize that the right lane is a right-only turn lane.
Well, if you have it on the northeast.
Never seen that before in my life.
If you have it on the northeast, now, which way is assigned, is it facing?
It faces east and west.
East, west, right, yeah. Somebody going north won't see it right away, only if you're going east or west.
But at that point, Hawthorne Parkway is running east and west.
Yeah, it's straight.
Okay, as opposed to coming from a northwest direction and flowing into an east-west road, okay? So I mean, I understand Larry's point.
Also, there's no residential neighbors who are going to be seeing the sign over there, so it's going to be.
Right.
Less of an annoyance to, to residences.
Okay, so, shall we open a discussion that, what you think is an appropriate timeframe, okay? I'm going to throw this out there as, just call it, let's see if it sticks to the wall, because we're dealing with signage that's for employees, potential customers, and the general public, okay? We definitely want to have them able to illuminate the sign before employees get there, not extensive time before employees get there, but before the normal time an employee would get there, okay? I'm going to throw out 7:00 AM in the morning, okay? And even when you're in daylight savings time, sun's up at 7:00 in the morning, so the sign is not going to be extremely bright, or, or, you know, something that could draw somebody's attention. I think what's going to be tougher on the timeframe is, how late do we let the sign go, okay? I've already said, in today's world, an awful lot of employees don't leave work until sometimes 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, okay?
Also, the Restolian building is, is lit on how late into the night with floodlights, and so there's usually a lot of illumination there. Are they on all night, or do they, how late do they?
Certain lights are only on till like 10:00 or 11:00, when the cleaning crew leaves, and then the ones around the underground lot and stuff stay on all night.
I was talking about the floodlights lighting the side of the, the building, you know, we know that it's a.
They're, they're on as long as it's dark, they're on a photo cell.
Okay, so they're on all night, so the buildings, the, the, the white north side of the building is illuminated all night.
Okay. So, you know, the only issue then becomes, is it additional light you're really putting out there? Not when you're looking at the parking lot lights or the floodlights on the building itself. The only component that I think we should be concerned about is the flashing. If it's a flashing light, that's different than a permanently illuminating type of light, okay? I mean, that's an attention getter. How, how late do we want to go, okay? I'm going to throw out 10 o'clock like I did before. Discussion on the board?
No, I think that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I was thinking six to 10, but seven to 10, of course, would fall within that.
Okay. I mean, I don't think you'd disagree with six instead of seven in the morning, would you?
No, because a lot of our employees come between 5:30 and 6:00.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay, six, I like your proposal, John. Tom, got any input there?
I don't have a problem in the morning ones, the night, I was thinking more like, you know, 7:00 or 8:00, but I don't know, if you want to go to 10, it's not a deal breaker.
Okay, well, then why don't we look at, let's modify the variance request to limit it to the northeast sign on the property, to get the digital sign modification, granting the request for its almost 10 additional square feet variance on the code section, okay? And that we approve the use of the digital sign from illuminating standpoint from 6:00 AM in the morning till 10:00 PM at night.
Is that sign also about 20 feet from the road, like the other one is?
I think it might be a little bit more.
I think it's, if we scale it off this drawing here, it's between 35 and 40 feet.
Yes.
Okay, that's pretty far off the road.
Pretty far off the road.
So if we're in agreement on the times, and the movement of the sign to the northeast existing sign, can we have somebody make a motion on that?
I'm very prepared to do that. I move that we approve case 2020-001, where Restolian Corporation is requesting a variation to allow a ground-mounted sign to be 59.16 square feet in lieu of the maximum permitted signs of 50 square feet, and to allow an automatic-changing sign conditioned upon it being on the existing sign on the northeast corner by visitor parking, and further conditioned upon the message board only being illuminated between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
Okay, good, is anybody seconded the motion?
Seconded.
Okay. We have motion modified and agreed to, and seconded. Okay, I'm going to take roll call.
Before you do that, John, could you talk about the, the results of having a mixed vote or a unanimous vote as far as where this ends up on the village board, Doc?
Yes, I will, okay? And it's more appropriate to do it before we take the vote. Right now, this is a board of seven members, okay? In order to grant a variance request, we need a minimum of four board members, okay, or a quorum, so that the variance that's granted goes on to the omnibus agenda of the village trustees meeting, next one. Mike, do you know when the next meeting is?
December 8th.
Okay, December 8th would be the next village trustee meeting, so if this is granted tonight, it will go on the omnibus agenda for the December 8th meeting. The omnibus agenda is standard-type things that the board addresses, okay? It's typically, okay, the ZBA said our recommendation is to allow this variance, and unless there's a trustee that wants to reopen it for further discussion, they will typically just go, fine, let's go ahead and grant the variance, okay? If we don't get a quorum in the vote tonight, and it would require all four of us being a positive for the granting of the variance, it would go on the regular village trustee meeting agenda, which means it would be open backed up for discussion, the village trustees may ask you questions again, okay? And then the village trustees would actually vote on the granting of the variance request, okay? So in short, if we don't have a full agreement with the four members here tonight, you'll have to probably do another presentation to the Board of Trustees on December 8th, okay? Mike, have you ever seen variance request on the omnibus agenda reopened for discussion before?
Yeah, it happens.
Okay, not very often, does it?
No, not often.
Okay. Now, you know what the next step is if it comes out of the zoning Board of Appeals, and how it comes out of the zoning Board of Appeals, is that what you were looking to have addressed, Larry?
If it's unanimous, it goes on the, the general group, if it's not unanimous, then it's, you know, scrutinized more, yes.
Any other open issues before we actually do the roll call? Okay, roll call on the motion that was put forth and seconded. Bauman?
Aye.
Cashin?
No.
Kennedy? Absent. Newberg?
Aye.
Vandermeulen?
Aye.
Okay. Based on the vote tonight, this is going to go on the regular agenda for the Board of Trustees meeting on December 8th.
Okay.
Okay?
How many, what was the final outcome on the vote?
Three, three yeses and one no.
Okay, so, well, this will end up just going on the committee of the whole meeting then, Gene?
All right.
And, and, yeah, and then the board will just consider the, there was a recommendation to approve that didn't pass, so, with three in favor and one against, and then everything will play out just like Chairman Vandermeulen said, you'll, you'll just be able to present your case again to the board, and they'll, and then they'll vote on it for a final outcome.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We got any other business to discuss? Give it a second, okay? Mike, I think we're going to adjourn the meeting, okay?
All right, great, hey, happy, happy holidays to everyone.
Yeah, you too, Mike, okay?
And once the Christmas party.
Thanks, thanks, everyone, for getting through this, sorry I couldn't be there.
That's all right, man, it, it happens. You're, you're in the quarantine zone, buddy, that's all.
All right, have a good, have a good one, really appreciate it.
I move we adjourn?
Yes.
I second.
You pinning the board, you always have it.
Yeah, meeting adjourned.